...related to that. So we currently do that in two facilities right now. In the stone building, which is in the center of the campus, which is very limited in terms of its size, and it is a historic stone building, so there's no alteration that we care to do to that or will do to that building. And then there's the metal boat shop across the street on the south side of Mary Street, which is actually shared between our maintenance department, our special projects, which is La Duchesse, and also the Boat Rite. So we do do restoration and refinishing and work on the boats. But as you can imagine, sharing space with a lawn mower and a snow blower and a triple cockpit runabout that needs refinishing and varnishing, that's not a good blend of uses for that space. Yep. So really, the new shop brings with it the opportunity for that classroom space. And so, for instance, I've currently been involved in conversations with the New York State Department of Labor, and we're on the cusp of being able to launch an apprentice program. But we can't do that unless we have the space to do that. And we haven't received official verification, if you will, of the program because once we go through that process, we only have six months to implement it. And so our whole building project is a critical factor in when we can apply for that apprentice program. But they'd like to use it actually as a sample for other programs throughout the state.
We're really quite fortunate here in Clayton. We have the museum, the AVM. I had a meeting with the T.I. Arts Center last week, and they explained what they're going to be doing in their building, which is very impressive. And when I went upstairs to the T.I. Arts Museum, I was like, you're right. It's really old and ruddy, and there's just not enough space. And you're running into the same thing. And we've also, Clayton has become that state of the art. And we're used, just as they're telling you, hey, we'll see how it goes for you, and we can take this into other facilities and other areas to do. So I think that's wonderful.
Yeah. I mean, the education is the primary focus.
Yes, it is.
Certainly, a number of years ago, prior to my departure from AVM and working at TAC, I was involved with a grant called the Community Connections. And it's been something that I've wanted to get back into place since I returned to the Antique Boat Museum. And this year, for instance, you can go to the museum and see grades K through fifth.
Yes.
And there are exhibit. And so our educator has been in the classroom all of the academic year with the culminating event being this exhibition. And of course, all the students receive free admission along with their families throughout the season in order to view their artwork in a professional mounted exhibition.
And I still have all my son's artwork.
It's true. We interviewed an individual for an admissions position last year, and I asked if she'd ever been to the museum before, and she said, well, her mother still had her decoy on their mantle, so.
Yes, yeah. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Where is it exactly? I'm part of my ignorance, but where are you going to place it?
So it's on the corner of Mary and Riverside.
Oh, right, okay. And then are you going to try to keep that cool tree, or is that not possible?
Unfortunately, at this point, it doesn't look possible. But because we are a boat museum and we specialize in wooden boats, although there's a lot of value in that transitional fiberglass and everything else, because really, the mission is recreational boating. So what gets you out on the water? But what we're talking about doing with the tree is actually milling that wood and using it in some fashion, if not in boat building, because maple's not the best for boat building, but some elements that will preserve the longevity, if you will, of the tree as it stands today, although it won't be rooted.
Anyone else have questions? Well, thank you very much for coming.
No, my pleasure.
Appreciate it. It gives us that whole perspective as to what you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you need more materials, I'm happy to share those with you.
Super. Thank you.
Okay.
Have a great boat show. Two days, Antique Boat Show.
Lincoln is here.
Yeah, a week's at Friday, Saturday, next. Thank you, Rebecca. Barbara?
Yes.
This is Barbara Huff.
Hi. If I could use my teacher voice, I need my notes. I was a physical education teacher for 30 years and state vice president for our teachers' union, I think. So of course, I ran across this book in 2008, The Blue Zones. I don't know if anybody is familiar with Mr. Dan Mutner, but he is launching a program that I will have to read, that is amazing. The Blue Zone is circled around communities that have most settarians. There's only one in the United States, Melinda, with a seminar at the Venice Hospital. That, so let me see what I have from, this is his words, not mine. Let's see. He talks about how much we spend, that we shouldn't be spending on things. And he is using University of Minnesota as we have to find out why these people are living longer and what they are doing right. So his ideas after doing this, this book was written in 2021, so he's had 20 years to look at these groups to see how they're doing and to see what he's found out with. So you have to have, one example he's using here is Alba Lea, Minnesota, community of 18,000, so sort of like this town. And at that grant, there was, I think, 20 cities that he tried to replicate what he saw around the world in the United States. So total, 72 cities have asked to join, and I would of course think Clayton is a perfect one to add on. So he worked for National Geographic, and his quote here is that we are the most phosphorus country in the world, and we are overweight, divided, and more unhealthy than ever. And what do we need to do? And, let's see, where's the next page? The problem, he says, is diabetes, cardiovascular disease, and dementia are what is coming up in our way we live, and it'd be helpful if we had an environment, and that's where he believes it is, it's in the cities. The newest one this year is Singapore. Singapore was a colony of England, and they engineered their community to be healthy. I mean, every building has fitness, community centers, and the restaurants on the bottom floors. So everybody knows everybody. There's walking clubs, there's bicycling clubs, they put up trails and paths. So it takes a community to do this, and people volunteer. This is a volunteer thing. They're not getting big grants to put this on. And he had the mayor, the city, the school board, the business leaders, so that they can have programs that make things healthier, restaurants and your stores. And they got 25% of their community to volunteer for this program. So I'm just the instigator, I guess. They ran this program in Minnesota for 18 months, and they changed the people's lives. And I think they said they lost over 600 pounds too, because they didn't keep track of that. So just amazing what you can do if like-minded people can get together. And of course, Liz from River Yocah put me up to this, and Lori from Hunters. So they have 72 cities now, from Texas to Florida, and the entire state of Hawaii is joining in to be a blue zone. So I'm challenging them, throwing out the gauntlet. I did run off all the pages from all the communities that had what they thought was the best. Well, Melinda was, of course, nuts and oatmeal and avocados and spinach and beans. Puerto Rico has a wonderful blue corn. That's supposed to be absolutely the best corn in the world, and they use it to make blue corn tortillas. We need to grow those. They have rosemary, mayonnaise, oregano, potatoes, beans. The Three Sisters, I don't know if you're familiar with The Three Sisters, squash corn and, yeah.
Beans.
Beans, thank you. Right there, beans. In Okinawa, they have melon and seaweed and mushrooms. I don't think I've said anything that sounds terrible here. You know, it's something you could just start adding in. From Greece, they like to use wild greens and fennel and honey. And Singapore, they are the best one. They have their healthy, 365. They have a healthy charge logo. I mean, I want to go there. They sound like they're having their idea, lose to win. And they have a healthy workplace ecosystem, and they even have eat, drink, and shop healthier challenge. So I gave a packet to one of you. I'm sorry, I couldn't afford to run home.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
But all these pages that I have here, I gave at one packet too. So you can look at them and see how this could be implemented. I will be going to your co-partner and the school board this month to see what we all, if everybody could get together and somehow find how to do this in this little peninsula here. I think it would be wonderful. And I know Liz and Lori said they could work on more in the winter when I'm not here. I'm sorry, I'm only here for the season. So any questions about how we can have happy, healthy?
What's the first step?
Getting people together, volunteers, walking groups, just because, I mean, you can try to find a grant, but I think you don't need to find enough volunteers here. I know Lori's here with her chair yoga. You already have one right here on tomorrow at 1:00. So you have the first nudge to get this to be a bigger, better, healthier community.
You may want, excuse me for interrupting, you may want to go over and talk to the Painters Center.
I tried, there was no one there.
Well, you need to go between 9:00 and 3:00.
Yeah, but that's not my focus. Unfortunately, in my school district, Los Angeles Unified, I asked them if they could in my last 20 years, if we could get their fitness scores up 10%, and they could not. And after COVID, they were like terrible.
No, I think you still should go over. That's a program that fits into the senior.
Yes, absolutely. We don't want to leave them out.
They have a number of fitness programs.
And I know in Peru, they educate the children to teach their parents, and that's the only way that we're going to be seeing them change, because some of us are stuck. And I love, and I did the triathlon for three years in a row until I had to have my own knee replaced. So I take advantage of all your opportunities.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for presenting.
Oh, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions about the, with regards to the police report?
Good evening, everybody. You all should have a copy of the DPW activity report. Wow, what a weekend, huh? Was that something? Dock's done just in time?
Yes.
I haven't heard any negative comments, but I heard a lot of good things, and that's a good thing here. I think we all did the right thing. It's working so far. It appears to be working. I was out there a couple of times this weekend, drove by boats, people standing on the dock, watching the poker run. Adam and the crew did a fantastic job getting it, you know, getting it ready, and they hurried. They worked late Friday to get the rail at the end of the one gangway to make it wheelchair safe. So, you know, kudos to those guys. Definitely a round of applause for those guys, because they did a fantastic job to get it done. They spent most of the day on, last Monday, at Customs, so kind of sent them back. And then we had that storm, and they were cut short on Tuesday, but they made it happen. They promised us that they'd have it. They promised Bobby Campbell they'd have it. They got it done, so awesome job. And we're out there today adjusting, checking all the connections today. John was on the dock. Hasn't moved too much. There's a few tweaks here on the bolts, on the connections, but other than that, it seems to be riding good. Probably by the end of the year, we should look into getting an inspection done on it just to make sure, you know, all the connections are holding properly and we don't have any voids or breaks in any of the connections.
We need to most likely get it done between August and September was Adam's recommendation.
Right. Yep. So yes, obviously, the sooner the better.
Yes, yes.
And adding to that, we did put a couple of trash cans back there today near those areas because I noticed that there were some cups, beer bottles, cans, whatnot, strewn from here and there. So hopefully, that'll tend to cease the next couple of days. Everybody realizes that we have trash cans. We eventually plan to put some benches back there. We'll secure them, make sure they can't get thrown in the river, you know, make it look a little more appealing. The dock guys did a fantastic job, especially the two young guys, Rich and Ryan. They were running all over the place this weekend, and that's why we got them, that those boys can run. I think they could jump from dock to dock. That's how agile those guys are. So, but a great weekend. I don't really have anything else to add, other than the poker run was a success. They did a fantastic job. They just, the people in this community this weekend was phenomenal, just phenomenal. I've been here a long time, and a lot of you guys have too, and to see that many people in the village and little to no problems, that says a lot for this community.
Terry, do you have anything to add about our New York Bridge?
Well, I do. We, obviously, it's Christmas time for the Washington Island people and the Village of Clayton and us, for sure. Worked hard for four or five years to try to get that grant, and we got $2.2 million grant. Pretty much every, the layout, I have the plans, if any of you would like to see them, I have them. What the plan is, in a nutshell, they'll do a temporary road. It'll take the bridge out. It's approximately 70 feet long. It'll be roughly 85 to 90 feet long with a two-lane bridge instead of a one-lane bridge, which that makes it a lot safer for pedestrians and everybody going on and off of it. The only unfortunate part is by the time we get permitting and all that kind of stuff, as you guys all know, it takes time, and we probably are looking at least, at least a year out. So probably the bridge wouldn't even be completed till late '26 or early '27. But if we can just nurse it for a few more years, I know the state will be here to inspect it. They're usually here in August to ruin my summer. So, but hopefully, we, you know, if there is any yellow flags, we can get them taken care of as quickly as possible. And Bartle and the Judas absolutely said, if you have any issues with the yellow flags or any flags, let us know. We'll make sure we can do everything we can to get the traffic and the people back on and off that bridge. Three motor years, so. I don't know if I have anything to add to that.
Can I ask a question about the bridge?
Sure.
Is there a, going to be a pedestrian lane to, or like?
I don't know as it's really, it's going to be a nine-foot lane with a two-foot shoulder.
Okay.
So there'll be a buffer zone, and nine times out of 10, you know, if you got two cars coming, you'll just wait to walk across or whatever, so.
But it's wider than it is.
Definitely wider than it is now, yeah, by far, yeah.
I saw a comment on Facebook, which obviously I didn't appreciate, and the individual says, what the heck are you doing, you know, $2.2 million to do a bridge? Well, and why are you doing it for these people? Well, there's 25 homes over there. They're all used in the summer. They're capable of being used the entire season. They don't have to leave. They're lovely homes. They pay waterfront property. The island has been there for years. The bridge is no longer safe, so you've got to get across their snowplows. People need fuel. People need this. People need that. So to quote Pooh Pooh doing this, I think, was very unthoughtful of that particular individual. Everything is expensive these days. We will, it's expensive. But to get that kind of money from New York State to do this, I think, is very good. And it was, it is necessary to do. Otherwise, you cut everybody off. And you saw how they complained when they couldn't get into Canada to get to their summer places.
And it is the only bridge we own.
And it is the only bridge that we own, so.
Might as well throw all the money at it, right?
Yes, yes, so.
Can I ask a question about the dock? So I noticed you mentioned the LED lights in blue or white. Was that a, is, because I know we talked in the climate smart community that, like, one of them is a softer light.
Yes, so you're talking like amber or like the brighter.
I don't know which one is, but could we go that way, if that's possible?
On the dock?
There are.
Their lights are on it.
Oh, okay.
They are. It's basically the same lighting. I don't know if you've been at the Mary Street Dock, but it's pretty much the same lighting as that.
Okay.
And they worked on putting lights on the ramp today.
Yes.
On the tread area, so that'll illuminate.
Yeah, Mary Street Dock.
For your, watching your step and whatnot.
Great.
Very, yeah, I think they did a fan, it looks like two runways, actually, when you stand down there.
I imagine, yes, sure.
It's pretty impressive looking. Something we've never had, so that's something really, something cool.
And then, I just, one more quick. Who does the inspection? You said there's got to be an inspection.
So we have to have a certified inspector. I know Jake is working on, Jake Van Reenen is working on getting some qualifications to do that. But the company that actually did that was out of Sweden, the concrete ones. The other one, the recent one, is out of Ivy League, so. But you have to have a diver, and Chris Hunt, I believe, is a qualified diver. And they kind of tell them what, or tell him what they want or what it should be, and he reports to them, takes pictures, videos. They see any discrepancies or discrepancies in it, then they'll take it from there and tell us what we need to do to repair it or fix it, or if it's in good shape.
If we were to contract with the original diver that came to install the docks, he came up from New York City, you're looking at probably 20,000 a day. So we're leaning towards using local people, and then they will also, as Terry was saying, as they're inspecting, they'll be communicating with Sweden at the same time to say, oh, you want to do this, this, and this. We will not, or the United States people will not make the decisions what needs to be changed. That will be directed by them. But we will, we think financially it's best to use them.
Yeah.
You could spend, you know, you could spend 20 to 100,000 for a year inspection.
I was actually talking about the bridge, not the dock, but, yeah, okay.
Oh, who inspects the bridge?
Yeah.
Oh, it's New York State.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, not, we wouldn't. New York State.
I thought you meant Seattle.
No, that's, yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Terry, I have a question about the three bridges that connect the docks out there. They're awesome. They're beautiful bridges. Do they stay in the winter, or are they removed?
We're probably going to have to move them, and we discussed that, I discussed that with Adam on Friday. Obviously, we're not going to, we don't, there's no way we're going to be able to, especially that 50-footer.
Right.
So maybe somebody like Steve Dor's crew, or Jake's crews, or Pat's crew, somebody in the area has got a barge that can actually pick it up. We could set it. We'll try to set it. The plan is right now, we'll have to take a look at it over next to the sitting wall, as close as we can, so you can still walk by it.
Right.
But yeah, probably the right thing to do is pull them just in case something happens out there. We don't lose those.
Those are the only way.
There's some good workmanship on those.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
They're beautiful. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
But I thought you worked with the Village of Clayton, not the town of Fort Hills.
Yeah, this shirt was a, what's that? Was a cheapie. He sent me the wrong one, so.
Yeah, he sure did.
I stuck it on today.
Make sure it says Clayton, right?
See if you noticed. Wanted to see if you noticed. I actually liked it better than a village one.
Okay, we'll think of that the next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Mosier from the Water Department.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to brief you on the unfoldings of the water and sewer treatment plant last month. So we hired a new septic hauler to remove our sludge from our sludge-holding tanks. His contract started last month. This fledgling business, he's equipped with a 5,000-gallon trailer. He's pursuing a larger trailer. At the moment, we're kind of losing pace in our sludge-holding tanks, and we're considering moving on to the second bidder. Now, this fellow is in really good communication with me. He briefs me on every trailer that he goes to inspect and potentially purchase. He's in Albany this week, looking at another trailer. I'm hoping he gets that trailer very soon. I don't want to bypass him, but I would like to put that out there that we might be allowing the second bidder to come to the stage and also assist in the transport of the sludge. You realize that that is one of our major expenses for our operations, and due to the delay and his removal last month, our average percent solids for the month was quite low. We'd like to see that in between a .7 and a 1. We had a .5 or .6 was the average for last month. So definitely some room for improvement there. We've discussed other scenarios. If he's not able to get a larger trailer, of adding in a, there's a polymer that we can add to the surface of the sludge-holding tanks that allows for the solids to settle quicker. So I've got a contact that's lack chemical. We might start just doing some small jar samples, seeing if this polymer will benefit us, and make the decision from there if we want to pursue that. Of course, we've been, proposed other packs in the past to get our sludge thicker. As we know, the big undesirable characteristic is the odor that it gives off if we allow that sludge to age and plumb in place. So it's a fine balance, and there's a little bit of room for improvement with our new septic hauler, and we hope to get to the bottom of that very soon. We had quite a bit of annual preventative maintenance performed the month of June, now that we're on the new budget. So this is annual maintenance that's contracted through outside contractors, and this, a lot of these maintenance are mandated by the state of New York, such as our flow meter calibrations. So we had Kinsley Power Service, they serviced every 17 generators throughout the village. So we've got the one here that was also included. There was no major mechanical issues found with those inspections. We did discover there was a blown water pump on one of the State Street pump station. We're able to order parts and take care of that situation in-house. We will have the Kinsley service, we've got a repair guy out, once that's complete, to finish his inspection on that pump station. But there's no major repairs to suggest on this last go-around. We did have EMA come out. They inspected all of our VFDs, our variable frequency devices, on all of our control panels. This is something also that needs to be done once a year. These are expensive units, and we like to make sure that they are running into top form, because otherwise, if they fail, we avail to doing our job. So that's underway. We also, we have a new on-call septic hauler, Fargo Septic Services offered, provide their services for us. So generally, every year, we like to maintain our pump stations by de-watering them completely, power washing the inside of them, detangling any of the float cables, and pulling the pumps up if necessary, and getting a look at the volutes and the check fellas. So this fellow, he's another fledgling business trying to make a name for himself, actually reached out to me and proposed a quote which was substantially lower than our pre-existing contractor. So, and he's been, he's been very good to us, calling at a moment's notice. He's already showed up two or three times at our plant like that, so very helpful to have him. I do have one overflow to report the month of June. If you remember, early in the month, on the 6th, we had about, we had 1.87 inches of rain that came down within an hour. Completely took our operators off guard. Coincidentally, we had our DPW sewer crews out the week previous, and they were jetting all the sewer lines. So what happened is that loosened a lot of the degree, set it free within the sewer system, and when the surge of rain came, it put it all on our bar screens, and it backed up the bar screen within seconds. So the overflow occurred for less than 10 minutes, and we had it cleaned up and reported to the DEC. Unfortunately, because we did have sanitary sewer overflow at the wastewater plant, we had to file an on-compliance report. More to come on that. Also, we are going to be required to maintain a phosphorus level of below 1 starting in September. In the summer months, we see the influent phosphorus levels creep up with the dry weather and the increased consumption. So we have increased our stern pack pump sets of wagland we utilize to sequester the phosphorus out of the affluent wastewater. It's $4.37 a gallon, so I don't like using it, and I don't give it willy-nilly. So because we weren't under compliance, I haven't really been applying the chemical. So come September, we're going to need to meet that compliance. So we started inching up our pumps, trying to get a handle on this phosphorus. So you will see an increased use this month and next for our stern pack usage. And then you will see, we had some overtime hours, a little bit more than average. A lot of that pertains A lot of that pertains to the storm events we had. We also lost one of our heat can arms at the wastewater plant. We had to schedule some overtime around that. We had brought in an operator, Dustin Orvis, very early one morning to assist with Fargo Septic Services. They were completing their pump stations. We wanted to empty some of these pump stations at low-heats hours, so we're going early in the morning when a lot of people were sleeping and not utilizing their sinks and showers. So, that worked out, and we developed a plan moving forward. We're gonna try to be doing this annually, as an annual preventative maintenance. So, I think that's important. So, that is... Oh, and the way, at the water plant, we were experiencing some high turbidity reads on one of our wall analyzers. If we have too many high turbidity reads, that'll trigger a flag with V O H, and we'll be in violation. We know that the turbidity reads are an error due to air bubbles being trapped in the system. So, we're trying to work with Kester Associates to figure out, do some detective work, what's causing that. We replaced both the air pressure, air relief valves on top of the filters. That unfortunately did not remedy the situation. So, I do have a call-in with Kester. He's working with our operators to try to investigate the cause. And they are scheduled to come up to do our orinator rebuild in another month. So, we're hoping that they'll bring another crew with them and help us get to the root cause of this. It could have something to do with just the changing temperatures in the water. Maybe it's off-gassing a little bit more in our system as it warms up coming uphill. So, those are some potential issues. But I'm afraid if it keeps happening, you know, if we have those high reads too frequently, that we need to avoid that, so we can figure out what the problem is. But, other than that, seeing the storm we had again earlier this month, you know, it is evident that when it rains, we see an immense inflow of stormwater at the East Union Riverside and Harbor Hotel pump stations. So, in that northeast corner of our village, there is some I N I. And I know B N L is dusting off their own report. We're gonna be examining that a little bit more closely. Because with the rains we've experienced in July, and then that W's we had in June, and the other overflow we had last August, it appears these ten-year floods are occurring just more and more frequently. And this unfortunately might be the new normal. So, we need to make plans to try to eliminate some of that I N I.
The average dry flow, when we, I just have average weather, you get a, it's a hundred gallons per minute, correct?
Correct. That's at Riverside.
That's at Riverside. The max flow during these overflows was twenty-three hundred gallons per minute.
Right. And when we went through the...
So, there's a lot of additional water coming in besides the rainwater. Now, we had close to four inches that day, you said.
Three point eight-seven, yeah, so.
But the good news is, we didn't have a overflowing.
We're not. Right. And the plant held up very well. I was surprised to see that. Usually, when we see East Union overflow and Riverside overflow, we're gonna see the wastewater plant overflow. This time, it did not happen. We had all guys on hand. We actually staggered our shifts that day. So, we had a guy in the morning, afternoon, and evening shift. And they were literally Johnny-on-the-spot with their hand on the pump switch, turning it on, turning it off, making sure we weren't overflowing our advanced treatment building. So, there were some measures we had to take to protect equipment. One of the measures we had to take was, we lived in the manhole at the Riverside pump station to prevent flooding in the neighbors and protect our control panels and all our expensive gadgetry. So, there will be another non-compliance report for the overflow at Riverside and East Union issued this month, which I will report on next month. But that being said, the plant did hold up. I was very impressed to see that. The plant with the upgrades is now rated for two point oh million gallons daily. And so, that's a monthly average, all right? So, now, this day, we saw over five point six M P D at times since the pain is at the plant. So, that being said, you know, unless we have floods every day, I can't see that being above our monthly average. Something to consider, that the plant did better than expected, better than rated.
Good, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I had a couple. So, is there, are there fees or, you know, fines for the non-compliance, or is it just?
I've, I've been at this podium about fourteen months, and I haven't yet to see a fine.
And then, what can we, is there anything we can do that's not, you know, obviously crazy expensive, but in the short term, that can maybe address this? I know you guys are thinking about that already.
Yeah, so, we're in communication with B N L. And there is, you know, obvious, some low-hanging fruit I think we can attack at the Harbor Hotel pump station. When we see rain come, those pumps trip on almost immediately. So, that tells me that's stormwater getting into the sewer line. When you see the pumps kind of pick up a little bit after it rains, well, that might suggest people's subpumps in their basements are kicking on. Maybe we've got a lot of illegal connections. Maybe we've got a lot of rain gutters still that are connected to the sewer system. So, B N L has, you know, performed smoke tests in the past, and they've identified some areas that we could really hone in on. Now, the corrective action is ultimately a board decision. If we wanna fight off another project, or if we wanna address some of these customers. And as B N L was mentioning, it's set by a thousand cuts right now. If we could just eliminate these little sources of inflow, will greatly help our plant and pump stations.
Yeah, I think we need to look into that, because, yeah, there's all that stormwater coming in. So, this...
Correct.
Thanks.
We will most likely not, we would like to have, possibly, it's not set in stone. We'll have a workshop the next board meeting or the previous board to start discussing this.
Right.
It's a big, it's another large project, but it does need to be looked at. And there are some things that can be done, so.
And a lot of this might be, be able to be accomplished in-house with our own EPW crews and operators. You know, it could be some of the ceiling around the manholes. I know B N L mentioned there's new manhole dishes ultimately that catch any of the rainwater that might seep in there, and then, once they're full, they just spill out into the streets. So, there's avenues that we can look at.
Yeah, and there's even plantings and things that can be done strategically that helps kind of absorb some of that.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, my pleasure.
The consent agenda, questions, comments?
I just have one on the minutes. I think we discussed, and it wasn't in the minutes, and I don't know that it needs to be, but I just wanted to bring it up, that we decided to change the parking, no parking from eight to ten. We decided to move the max.
That was your question, that was your comment. That wasn't a, we didn't make a motion on that.
Oh, I thought you said we were going to do that.
I brought it up, and it was, yeah, we can. It's two hours to spend seventy-five bucks to get a new sign. So, the board can make a motion and decide if that's what they wanna do. That was your, your thought.
Yeah, well, yeah, in the public, too, right, yeah.
That was your thoughts, it was not a full board.
No, I thought you said we're going to do that. Okay, I misunderstood.
So, if the board wants to make a motion to make that change, they're welcome to.
And just, yeah, to remind everybody, the thing that the gentleman from the audience, as well as myself, mentioned that, like, things like fireworks and dining out, you know, people are here to, weren't to the ten p.m., to the eight p.m.
Right.
And people weren't parking in those spaces to watch the fireworks, because they said, no parking after eight. So, that was, that was sort of discussion.
Did we talk about just having something temporary during those events? To put there instead? Signs put over them? Was that brought up?
I might have, I might have brought it up.
Meaning also, the gentleman also commented that we have three reserved Village of Clayton spaces, and we shouldn't do that. Well, I don't know. It's tough to cover every single aspect to, and you'll have, you have people at the Christmas parade that park in front of doors and all kinds of stuff. So, people will find a spot. They'll do what they wanna do, but if you want the sign changed?
I mean, I'll make a motion to change the signs to ten o'clock from eight o'clock. We could just literally put sticker, I mean, you know, like, you get a permanent sticker, put it over the ten, so, I mean, so, over the eight, so it's ten. So, that way, people know they can park.
During special events?
Just, I think just in general, because, you know, people come and eat dinner, and they go to shows at the Opera House. You know, they're more likely to, they can't park there that says eight o'clock. They're gonna go to the Opera House, or, you know, they're gonna have a later dinner, or anything like that. If nobody else is interested in that spot. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, do I have a motion for items one, two, and three?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? And then, Capital Projects, motion for that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll say it, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Alrighty. So, the last couple of weeks, we've had some meetings, some of the trustees and myself. And trustee Riddick is gonna talk about this traffic study. We met with chief Pattonoff in regards to that.
Yes, Nancy and chief Pattonoff and I met on July eleven. What we were going over was the traffic study that B N L delivered on November eighth, twenty-twenty-three. This was a study that they worked on last summer. It was almost a year ago, it was Friday, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. It was basically to observe the traffic volumes and assess the existing conditions within the Village of Clayton during peak traffic hours, which they outlined as three to six p.m. And it was definitely something that I wanted to do to include chief Pattonoff, because he is the eyes and ears on the ground in charge of enforcing on this. So, we started out the meeting with chief saying that he approaches traffic safety from two different perspectives. One is he asks, is the traffic flow safe? And then, the second area he looks at is, is it convenient? And he says that he really looks at the safety part of it first, obviously. Some of the traffic congestion that Clayton has causes the traffic to be slower, and that's going to make it safer, in chief's opinion. So, he wasn't really in favor of making any of the changes that B N L suggested, because the changes would make the traffic move more quickly, and that's going to cause more accidents.
Yes, yeah.
Did somebody have what he was saying?
He commented that by making some of the streets one-way would allow for people to actually go faster down that street. And now, you have people parking on both sides of the one-way possibly, and they're coming out, and then, somebody's coming up the street, which can create a problem also.
One of the suggestions that I made was making the first, like, the top end of John Street one-way, so that it would be moving south only. His criticism of it would be that there'd be people parked on both sides of the street, and traffic flowing south wouldn't be accustomed to people pulling out from both directions, which does make sense. When you're moving, you're used to traffic pulling out basically from the curbside, you know, the passenger side of your car. And in this case, cars would be pulling out potentially in your direction from both sides. So, he wasn't in favor of that. We also talked about some signage changes.
Yep.
So, it's up to us ultimately to decide whether or not we wanna move forward with any of B N L's suggestions. I think we should put the traffic study on our website so that other people can see it.
Okay.
That would be great, please. Thank you.
We do know we will not do back-end parking. That's not gonna happen, that's... But as far as making a lot of the streets one-way, he felt that it ultimately does not make the village safe, because people then drive too fast.
Right.
So...
We spent quite a bit of time on it. It was about forty-five minutes.
And there was a day that, it was a Saturday, it was June something. Lot going on in the village, and Kevin and I were chatting. He said, get in the car. So, we drove down Riverside Drive. We took a, what, we turned onto John Street, because that was an area that I felt should become one-way. And he explained the whole situation, why it wasn't safe. And that was also the same day that, as we were moving slowly, a smaller S U V decided to pass us on the right side. Okay.
In a police car?
Yes, in a police car. Yes, they did get pulled over. I was disappointed when he said, no, it's, I don't feel that this is safe. I was like, oh, darn.
Yes.
But I understood it.
We also talked about the end of Merrick Street.
Yes.
The end of Merrick Street's one-way. One of the suggestions from B N L was making that two ways. And he said, what that does is it opens up larger trucks to go down North Street.
A narrow street, yes.
You know, heading north, and puts larger trucks back on a smaller street than we really would want. So, my take on it, after spending an hour with Kevin, is not really thinking we should be letting in with this at this time. The traffic is, you know, congestion during the summer months. It slows you down, it's inconvenient. You know that if you wanna go downtown during the middle of the day, that it's going to take you longer. And, you know, sometimes people make trips in the morning or after the busiest of hours to make it more convenient for themselves. So, making it more convenient by making the streets one-way isn't something that I would recommend doing after talking to the chief.
And I concur, but again, it's ultimately the board's decision how they wanna handle it. I have noticed this summer that the delivery trucks, you know, they're parking in the middle horn, which is very good, we'd like to see, and they're carting to various places. So, that appears to be going well, and I'm not seeing as many vehicles parking in that center lane. That could be because the Queen of Hearts isn't up there enough, but give it a couple more weeks. So, we're not opposed to changes, just when, when we have changes, we have to really think it through. Thank you. On Friday, February, no, on Friday, July twelfth, trustee Rirsbrun and myself met with the T I Arts Council to discuss their request for the sidewalks and the parking spaces. And we came to a, not a conclusion, we came to a compromise, that we would give them the two parking spaces that are directly in front of the building that's going to be demolished, but not the other two on the other side, but just these two. We also came to the compromise that, yes, they would actually not be closing down the whole sidewalk. That was my complete misunderstanding, that it's going to be signs that say sidewalk closed ahead. So, we recommend that you cross here and go around. If you want to take your life into your hands, then you can jaywalk also. They will have plate people there to monitor the traffic as time approaches. Their work hours will be from seven a.m. to three p.m., Monday through Friday. And now, construction will begin on or after August fifth. They still have a few more permits they need to get, et cetera, et cetera. Does the board have questions or comments?
Do we know when the construction will be done, or, I mean?
They're saying, they're saying August, September twenty-five. And we will have their water done by then, for sure. That will definitely be done.
Realizing that's not an exact science.
Right, exactly. And we understand that, yeah. I mean, I understand it, we all do.
Now, is there, for the, I know, like, in the cities, you'll see, so, they'll have a sort of temporary, you know, pathway around the pardon lots, a sense... around the parking lots, or around the parking spaces, would there be anything like that? So that since the sidewalk would be closed, they can still go around that way without, or not? It's just not?
We didn't really talk about that. I don't think it's personally a safe idea.
Yeah.
I know, and I think where you're going is you go to...
Yeah, like we'll cone it off.
You go to the square in New York City, Times Square, and it's all like that. But it's fairly dangerous, I think, for not safe. So they will take care of all that also. Alright. So could I have a motion from someone to accept these?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
You second it?
No, no, he's recused himself from anything.
A second, yeah.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Trustee Wiersbrun.
Oh, on the 12th, it was, I met with Jake Van Reenen and his wife about the continual problems at the end of Union Street. Yep, yep. Can you hear me now? Okay. I met with the Van Reenens on that Saturday just to try to get a little more to the bottom of what's been going on at the end of Union Street for the past several years. My short-term on the board, but my 25 years being in Clayton, you know, recognizing what's happening down there.
Excuse me, we actually met, trustee Wiersbrun and myself met on Friday, the 12th.
The 12th, yep, yep.
With the Van Reenens?
Yes.
Have you met with any other residents or residents?
Not yet, not yet. You're on my list.
Well, no, this is not public discussion time, alright? You let the board say what they say.
My reasoning for this is to try to get some forward progress with it. There seems to be no forward progress. We see that it seems to go back and forth, and nothing happens. I have noticed over the years the improvements that have been made at his property, but at the same time, I see the continual equipment and stuff there too, in Village Right-of-Way. So the village went out of its way to have the property zoned. And there were times that, there was some stuff that Jake didn't...
Yeah.
He thought it was his, and he realizes now it isn't.
When he looked at the...
Once he looked at the survey.
At the survey.
I'm sorry, yeah, the survey.
Yes.
And he was very receptive to wanting to comply, do everything he could. So we outlined four or five items, said we need to start here, and I'd like to chop away at it. And I feel that it went well. I feel he's, I think he started doing stuff immediately. One thing I believe that has to be, you know, we sort of left up to Jake because he's trying to keep the end cleaned up where the water washes down there. The village doesn't seem to react quick enough to be able to get there with other things going on. So he takes it upon himself to try to clean up the stones and level it all back out. And I don't see a problem with that. But he was more than willing to adjust everything that we suggested.
And so what we not only suggested but told him to do was that he was to contact Terry if he was to make any improvements down there. He was under the impression for all these years that he owned that property. And once he read the entire survey, he realized it. So he, so I told him, you want to make any changes down there? And as trustee Wiersbrun said, when the water flows down there, it makes gullies and ruts. When he had an area on his property, blacktop, they took the additional blacktop and put it down there. So that he has removed, and that's what he did. He removed it, one, because it shouldn't be there, and two, it makes it all unlevelled, et cetera, et cetera. And that's what he was probably grading out today. The car and the golf cart will be moved, has been moved off the property. Anyone is allowed to put a vehicle on the right-of-way, no more than 12 hours. So... So that is, that has been done and will maintain that way. They will remove, he showed me a picture, that he has one cleat or attachment for the father's boat onto our seawall that will be taken off and put somewhere else, on the bulkhead. He will re, the plastic chain that he had there was designed to keep, for safety reasons. He found that people were coming over from Ree Street and other areas, walking through his property to get over to French Creek to the boatyard. And that's very dangerous to just walk.
He did have a scenario.
Yeah, he talked to, he shook some people.
From the other docks, people were coming through with the new boatyard.
And it's dangerous.
The restaurant, people are going from the docks behind him, behind his homes.
Yes.
And walking through there. And he had a scenario with somebody walking through there, he didn't see them. And he was like an excavator.
Right.
And he saw him at the last second and realized they were behind him. And that was his reasoning for that, but once he saw that it was on his property, or on the village's right-of-way.
He will move that chain to his property now, and it will be off of ours. And they will keep the area clear of all of the equipment.
Excuse me, I asked to be on the agenda today. Joanne can verify that I did send the in looking at work and follow the proper procedure to be on the agenda today to speak on this issue. And Joanne suggested that I come here today since there was a clerical error, and I asked you if you would be on the agenda. I did follow the proper procedure to be on the agenda today. And I figured if you guys wanted to...
You get three minutes to speak. You will be the only one to speak about this issue. This is not a public hearing. We have, even though this board has, trustee Wiersbrun, we have gone through this since 2019. When people say, well, you need to hear about the public's concern. This is, has nothing to do with what happens at French Creek or French Bay. Nothing to do.
And I don't want to speak about French Bay.
No, I'm telling the rest of the public, this is not about French Bay. This is just directly about the Village Right-of-Way at the end of that street. You can have three minutes to speak.
So I can just speak now?
Yes, well...
Do you want her to go now, or?
I mean, I don't know.
No, you can go with public comment, yeah.
Well, it's not really public comment, it's an audio, well, whatever. If you would like to continue the conversation, I can do now, or I can do it in public comment.
So does anyone here have additional questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So the houseboat that's in the village is repairing rights in the water at the end of Union Street, that's gonna be moved too?
No, the dock is connected to Kellogg property.
Right, but the houseboat's in...
I understand, but we're not going through that. We don't have the time, the money, the patience to continue to go through that.
Why is there money involved? I mean, can't we just give a parking ticket or whatever?
Because repairing rights are fair, no, you cannot do that. I did ask the lawyer that, and he said then it becomes a civil matter once you start imposing fines.
Even a parking ticket? What, on, so if a boat stays, you know, down at these marinas more than they're supposed to overnight, what do we do?
I believe we just go to them and tell them...
So we don't give them a ticket or anything?
No, we had, no, we don't. We've, we had one individual early part of this year that was jumping between Mary Street Dock and the town dock, and back and forth. And he was spoken to by the police not to come back to the Mary Street Dock. So no, we don't do that.
Well, can we have the police talk to the boathouse, the person that owns the boathouse, and ask them to move so that other, the public can use that water?
Do you really?
Can mine also go there also?
Excuse me, this is not public comment. If you want to get this settled, then we have to discuss it. We have spent thousands of dollars in this. I understand you have spent a lot of money.
$150,000.
Well, we spent lots of money to do this. And we've had this, and we've had numerous conversations. So no, this is not public comment time, and let's revamp this whole thing. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm gonna move on from the houseboat. But that, that would be my question, is can we have the, you know, police go and say, hey, you can't keep your boat there like we would if they're at another dock? Or anywhere else for that.
But that's not our dock.
But, yeah, but it's our water. I mean, it's, it's New York State and the village's water rights. The second question is that with paving, did a village engineer look at it as far as stormwater, you know, mediation, so?
No.
So the paving doesn't just wash into the...
No, the, the, the paving person that was paving on Van Reenen's personal property
Yep.
just had paving leftover, and they put it there.
But we should, but we should still, there should be like stormwater...
So he's removing it out of there.
Oh, he's taking it out of there. Oh, good, 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 yeah, yeah.
Yes, and he was regrading that today for that entire reason. No, it had nothing to do with that. It was just a piece that got flopped there.
It's still gonna flow the river, it's just gonna be slower.
Right.
Get them there.
I mean, it can be graded, you can just put a stormwater, you know. I mean, that's what I had to deal with, my property. You know, I mean, that's not a big deal. Again, just like what he was talking about.
Well, this is our property, so we need to do that, not the Van Reenens.
No, I mean, when I had property, the village engineer at Sackett said, you know, and it was a gravel parking lot, he said, you had to put a stormwater, just, because the, stormwater needs to be, you know, looked at. I mean, he brought that up at the beginning. Where does it go? And we don't want it to flowing to our property, and we don't want it to flow into the river either. When, when you build a parking lot, you know, there should be, maybe there's not any sort of regulations and the village doesn't need to look at it here, but I think we should look at that going forward because that's important.
Like, if they don't follow...
So if the stormwater, okay, so for example, in my particular case...
So you want us, you think there should be a stormwater drain at the end of Union Street?
No, no. If you're putting a parking lot in, then you should, yeah, a public, a parking lot in a business, you should put a, a stormwater, you know, some sort of drain.
Catching, catching.
Exactly. So that way, it doesn't go onto the neighbor's water or, you know, land, or it doesn't go, in our case, to the village land. I mean, that should just be a normal thing.
Well, I think you should...
Not just this, but any, in any case, and that should be a normal thing.
You may want to go and talk and have a discussion with Terry about that because it's all flat rock down there.
Yeah, okay.
And therefore, it would have to be blasted, and that is part of the problem.
Well, you can grade it a different way too.
And that's probably not going to happen.
Alright, I'll ask Terry, thank you. Yeah, those are the only questions I have, thanks.
So could I have a motion to approve these, this conversation?
I'll make that motion.
Well, do we, do we want to hear from the public before we vote on this? Wouldn't that make sense?
No, this is on the agenda this way, no. Public comments at the end.
Can I, can you wait one minute?
Do I have a second?
Can you please state exactly what you're voting on, what are the items?
You know, we'll go ahead and make you a copy of this because I had told the Wallaces, and I told Patrick, and I told you, and I told...
You told me the houseboat would be removed.
No, I never said the houseboat would be removed because the dock belongs on Kellogg property.
Explain, Nancy, I have to...
I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna say that. But you're more than happy to have this.
Please just say what you're voting on, and I will make your vote.
Jake will contact Terry Jones, DPW supervisor, with any requests to change or improve the right-of-way. The car will be, will be moved off the property along with the golf cart. Seaway Marine will remove the cleat that has attached the bulkhead regarding their houseboat. Seaway will remove the plastic chain that runs across the right-of-way. The chain will still be there, but it will be on their property, not on our property. Seaway will keep area clear of equipment.
Sorry, I did have one more question, I forgot. When it says DPW supervisor with any requests to change or improve, don't we want, you want to change that to maintain? Because we don't want, like, them to improve things, you know, or whatever, right?
Well, he has improved it, and he's willing to take all those rocks out.
Right, but we should still have a say in, you know, I mean, what he wants to, and again, nothing against him, but if what you want to improve might be different than what the village wants improved, right? So I mean, it seems like if he wants to improve something, we should at least have a say in that. Would that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, can we just change that to maintain?
You could change the wording to maintain for that.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems reasonable.
Thank you.
To change or maintain?
Not change, no, just to maintain.
Just maintain.
Yeah.
Okay, so now who wants to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, I oppose. Thank you.
I think the next thing correct is to approve that everyone got the minutes?
Not the minutes, the financial statements.
Yeah. Just to make a motion that you'll all receive the payment included in the financials? You would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I kind of went off track. So new business. We've had a challenge in getting some of our current projects that need permits signed. So as I spoke with the lawyer on Friday, we can do that by appointing an interim enforcement officer. The current enforcement officer has the legal ability to do that. But I felt that it was better to put this in a resolution because otherwise, these projects that are trying to be taken care of get pushed back, and that is not fair to those applicants. So that's what this resolution is about in regards to. Any questions, comments?
Who's the person you're appointing?
Tom Gardner.
There's one typo, but it's not a big deal. Officer for the law space on... Number one.
Oh, I didn't hear the resolution about, where is it?
It's number one, it just says, the second line of number one.
Just need a, just need a space, yes.
Not a big deal.
Yes. I did speak with Tom today, and he has no problems at all doing this. Trustee Wiersbrun was there also.
So if we work with the town as far as how everything's working and everybody's on the same page and all that as far as who's doing what with the zoning and enforcement?
Are we?
Yeah.
No, we're not.
I think there's some confusion there that's bothering me.
We'll discuss that later. So do you want a roll call vote?
So I'm so sorry, but he said, he spoke to Tom today, he has been forward to that.
Doing?
That.
Oh, that, doing, signing the permit.
Okay, so someone needs to make a motion on resolution?
I can make that one.
And a second?
So I have a permit, like, going on right now, so I'm gonna abstain and just apply everybody because I don't want to...
I'm gonna abstain too because I don't quite understand what we're doing here, and I'd like to hear the whole story before I vote on this.
So ask a question, please.
What is the arrangement now between the town and the villages that you said we'll talk about later?
There is no arrangement. Richard refuses to sign any of the zoning permits.
The last we heard, there was a discussion that the...
It never took place.
So that's the update?
Yeah, well, no, I have more to update, but we'll talk about that in, in the...
So I'll abstain until I hear the whole story.
This is just to temporarily...
Just so that we can get temporary, so that potential, an interim, yes.
Hire or get Thomas Gardner to be able to sign. I mean, we can have him sign it whether you guys...
Right, we can.
But the lawyer just saw thrown a resolution that you covered your, you know, everything. So it's just to have him sign the permits that are going right now to keep them moving forward and not, you know...
Yeah, I wanted a permit, so that's why I'm abstaining, yeah.
Okay.
So it's possible that Richard would come back and start doing this again?
No, he says he will not.
So you won't?
No, he will not.
Well, he needs someone to do this, so I'll...
Yes, that's why, we need some for now. Yes, that's why. We need some for now. We're gonna be having an executive session and we will discuss more for this, what's moving forward.
And he's already been hired, so it's not like you're hiring him as, it's just so he can sign the zoning permits. And it doesn't matter if you have a permit in or not.
No, I'm abstaining. I'm more...
Okay.
More impending time-sensitive permits are in place.
I mean, like, yeah, there's, there's business, there's business that needs to move forward.
The antique boat museum and some other personal, you know, that...
So...
Yeah, this is something that I talked about, you know, two months ago, about the timeliness of summer work, so...
Correct, and you are correct. Yes, yes.
So you'll second it?
So do you make a second?
Yeah, second it.
All right. Call or favor?
Aye.
It's a roll call vote, Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Deputy mayor?
Abstain.
Trustee Rudolph?
Yes.
Trustee Wirthsbaum?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Abstain. Yep, thanks.
Okay, the resolution has been adopted.
Uh, let's see. I got a lovely postcard today from Mark Walzen. He's in 120-degree weather. Would certainly love to be on the St. Lawrence River.
I think everybody got that.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Okay, nice. The river community is having a cookout over the weekend, on Friday, for the American Bass Anglers, which is going to be at the French Creek Marina. We, the poker run went well. Over the weekend, we're having a balloon festival. And I believe that's, uh, Friday night, the balloons will be up at Coyote Moon and then on Saturday, they will be at Zenda Farm. Are there any committee updates?
Yeah, the Climate Smart Committee met and things are moving along. We, we are shooting for, and again, it's a tentative date, but sort of a big public information center or forum on September 14th, that's a Saturday. Working with Cornell Fiber Extensions Energy Community Department, or whatever you want to call it, as far as nailing down a time. Now, they, they had some staffing issues, so that's why I say it's a tentative date right now. But I talked to them today and they think they're gonna be okay. And things are moving along. It's, yeah, it's gonna be a great program and we're now pursuing our certification.
Thank you. Anyone else? Candy, if you'd like to come up and speak, please?
I would. I would like to start by saying, this is, this is my husband's wedding and this is the dining room I gave him. My husband's...
Yeah, you, please stand here and say your name.
My husband is now...
And... And your address.
Eight eleventh. So we are people, okay? We bought our house in 1995. We love, this is third, I'm sorry, fourth generation that's been coming to life. So my husband and I bought a house here with the idea of, we absolutely love this village and we will retire here someday. Yeah, I'm from Jersey. Yeah, I got an attitude. Yeah, I get all that. Unfortunately, my husband's dead, so you gotta listen to me. He was the one without emotion that I could talk to. So now you're stuck with me. So we go here to retire stage four cancer and they approve a business next door. Hey, fine. We shook hands. We'll be neighborly. Everything's compromised. We're not hard ass. I don't even care if you get a permit for everything. Just leave us alone. Let my husband live, okay? All he wanted to do was sit on his porch. He couldn't do that. Because the business started next door and there's not one piece of paper in this municipality that gave that permission and right to go. Richard said, well, it's grandfather. It was a boatyard for 25 years, but all of a sudden, it's grandfather for marine construction, okay? At the same time that we have to have these tractor trailers going back down our street and all this heavy equipment and everything for small retail, that's what he was approved for. There's no grandfather. I can give you 100 pictures of 25 years of boats. Nobody maintained the end of our street. Jake has to maintain it now because Jake messed it up. He shouldn't have touched it. And this previous board, it's not you, so I'm not blaming you, but under norma, Jeremy Kellogg, read the meeting transcript, it's on the website, from 6/8/20. In 6/8/20, Jeremy Kellogg, we did a presentation. And part of the presentation was a man living at the end of our road. Why is this man living at the end of our road in a houseboat? And Jeremy informed the board that it was abandoned property. The 58-foot of waterfront was abandoned property and he was leasing it to his friend, the Van Redens. So a trustee is leasing a public street. This is a great concern to the comptroller's office, which I'm still in contact with and I will definitely be talking to them after today. They were waiting because I was told this was going to be taken care of. This man does not pay taxes. They work seven days a week with an unapproved, they don't have one condition. Fred Fox has a file this fact. They don't have one piece of paper. We have lived in a hell and my husband, his cancer wasn't that bad, stage four cancer. He just wanted to sit by the freaking porch without tractor trailers and heavy equipment and fighting the village and all this stuff. I would like you to look at some village code. With my husband and I have extensive knowledge in zoning. Wait, this is ridiculous. It's, I'm sorry, I'm emotional. It's beyond ridiculous. Code, I, I'm not a stickler for the rules. I'm not gonna tell you I got a permit for every time I did something in my backyard in Jersey, but I never bother my neighbor. When you bother your neighbor, you gotta follow the rules. That's when your neighbor's gonna complain, like when Jeremy Kellogg, two weeks ago, put in a huge patio at 6:30 in the morning. Didn't get a permit. He does what he wants. So you guys just voted to give Jake permission to maintain the mess that he made. He didn't speak to any of us. He didn't ask us what it's like living there. And we're just two that came today just because he's been doing it all day long. Code 11013, you cannot regrade a public street in this village without written permission of the board. It is not Terry Jones that goes down to his buddy Jake and says, "Yeah, Jake, yeah, you're making it better." He made, he made the problem. From 1995 to 2021, the village didn't have to maintain the end of our street. People put kayaks in there. They fished there. They did everything there. My lawyer got a letter two weeks ago because Nancy said he had taken out the poles. So I went down to take pictures. So there were before and after. My lawyer got a letter that I was trespassing with video. I watched the video. I'm nowhere on his property. Jake told you? He didn't know where his property ended? Look at the ZVA meeting 2020, might have been 20 or 21. They had all their properties. And his wife, who's a lawyer, stated very clearly, she knew exactly where his property lines were and they've had all their properties survived. So please don't believe him when he says he doesn't know where his, where the property line was. He absolutely does. He knew exactly where each property line was and they stated that. So, and she also stated that, read the minutes where they were, where they went in front of the ZVA. She gives them the impression that she owns the entire end of the street. They said it's always been private. It's never been public. So here you got a trustee lining his pockets with a village street. We're telling people from Jersey this and they're like, how could that even go on a day? How does that even go on a day?
How much money did he receive?
I know how much he received for two years.
That has nothing to do with the conversation. Give me one more minute.
I know how much he received for discovering for two years. Mr. Kellogg should be donating that money to the village because I don't know how much he's gotten to date. So you just voted that the houseboat is allowed to stay in the riparian area. I have a boat and I live there. He has a boat and he lives there. So can we now, we, you have just voted that private citizens may use the riparian area of the village to moor our boats? That's what you just voted on. So we, as citizens, have the same rights as Jacob Van Reden. So we can put our anchor down. We just won't put a cleat out, but we can have our boat there, too. That's what you just voted on. Okay? This is not right.
But can, this is...
And you said there were gonna be picnic tables down there. Where's the picnic? And what about, wait, one more thing. One more thing. How will the electric and water hook up that they have in the public street that feeds the houseboat? Are you gonna let them continue to have water and electric hook up in a public street? I'm sure they shared the pole with you, which is about 15 feet into the public street.
They're not pulling power from...
Yes, they are.
They're not pulling power from the village.
No.
It comes from the house and the water.
But where is the electric?
Yeah, the electric is on the village.
Yes.
Yes, it's in the village.
Time is up. Thank you.
Okay. It's very disappointing. I have to tell you.
But I won't, the one comment...
Nobody talk to us.
First of all, that is not true. Secondly, the one comment is, there is nobody on the board except for trustee Wiersbruck for the last eight months that was ever part of this. This was for completely past administration.
I said it to the board also.
No, I understand that, but...
I feel like we're making headway with them and trying to chip away at this stuff. And we've already talked about the electric box.
But the guy's left tax-free on our flyline basis.
Well, I, that part I don't know, you know, so...
And you know what? It's a new board and you know what? I appreciate that you're even listening to it with the previous board. Let Jeremy just run his show. So I appreciate that, you know, my husband's is a great 150K out, no problem, but please you put some...
I'd like to make one comment towards what was just said. I really wish that we gave her an opportunity to speak before we voted. Thank you.
I don't, I believe that.
Vote. Uh, we are going to go into executive session.
I'm the public comment.
Three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Major Stevenson. I have a comment related to the last village board trustees meeting. I clearly remember that in the last, um, village board trustees meetings, with regard to the French Town townhouses, the Kellogg French Town townhouses, I distinctly remember Mayor Hyde saying that there were going to be no townhouses, completely new plans, and there would be either single-family houses or multiple-family houses. Distinctively remember those four points. Four nights later, at the village planning board meeting, Mr. Kellogg, Mr. Morgen, and Mr. Lachon presented their new plans that had five three-story townhouses and two multiple occupation units, I think, but definitely five townhouses. So over this project, when it was first presented in pre-application, it was nine townhouses. Then the next month of the planning board, in the first site plan review, it was seven townhouses. Then I came to the village board of trustees meeting and the mayor said, "No townhouses". And then four days later, back in village planning board meeting, there were five townhouses and two, um, multiple occupation houses. This is ridiculous because Code 132-35, application requirements. Let us see, numbers one to 26, list a checklist of what should be in an application before it even goes before the planning board. Time after time after time, for the last two years, I've been attending planning board meetings and I have been watching plans coming to the planning board by will of either Mr. Ingerson or Dr. Rogers alone. They don't follow the correct procedure for having the application submitted into the planning board and accepted by the board. They just whip them in, whip them through the board with practically no information about the plan. Thank you very much. It is voted on. Chop up. And I'm sick of it. Thank you for listening to me.
In reference to the comment that I made, I may have said that about, we're not gonna argue about it. I may have said it. I may have. And as you, as it was spoken at the planning board meeting, those plans changed all the time. That was Monday night. They did not keep, keep the board apprised. It was said at the meeting that if you want to look at the plans, you need to go down to the village officer and talk to the new person there. We did not receive those particular plans until Friday afternoon. Friday afternoon. So we did not, we were not privy to this and we, as a village board, do not have the authority or opportunity to go in and tell them what to do. It is not how the boards operate. I, I do not disagree with a lot of what you're saying, but you have to understand the authority of what this board can do.
Well, the authority...
And they're pushing, you're, you're right. You know, they come in, boom, we want it done.
The authority, what authorizes the zoning board of appeals and what authorizes the village and town joint planning board is the state. And they are trespassing on state regulations. And what goes with authority is responsibility and accountability.
I don't disagree with you.
My belief, they are not acting responsibly or accountably under state regulations and it will come back to bite them in you-know-where.
Yes, and I, even though I'm getting the impression that nobody in the audience believes me, I have had numerous conversations with both the ZVA and with the planning board. We have spoken to them that we need this information well ahead of time. And somebody at the town offices held the information up.
Just because the legal notice, when it goes out, that there's going to be a public hearing.
I can only do with what I get.
And I'm just going to let the board know that the legal notice, when it goes out in the paper prior to a public hearing, it clearly says in the legal notice, published in the TI-Song and put on the notice board in the office downtown that the plans are available for inspection by members of the public. And those plans have not been made available for inspection at all by members of the public.
Because they were not given to us, you know, so what are we doing? They weren't given, they came Thursday, Friday afternoon.
I think, you know, I think it's worth us writing a letter saying, just reminding the, the planning board and the zoning board what the regulations are and everything should be followed. I mean, you, you make complete sense. And, you know, if, if you have laws, you gotta follow the laws. If you have rules, you gotta follow the rules. If it says you gotta give 36 hours or four days' notice or whatever, you gotta do that. I mean, everybody should be knowing that. If they don't do it, then you wait for a month or whatever, however it works. I, I think we're all in agreement with this, but it, yeah, we need to, I don't know what we can do. We need to do something to just remind everybody.
Oh, we'll do something. Don't worry. It's gonna get done. And done sooner than later.
Thank you for sharing.
I can just say, I can also tell you very quickly that if somebody puts in such a thing as an article, subject challenge, for example, and it says, you know, legally you have 20 days to respond to it or something, if you put in your response 21 days later, you'll likely just lose the whole case. So if everybody else has to play by the rules, they should be playing by the rules, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joanne, do we need to make a motion to end the meeting?
No, go on to executive session if you guys are gonna do that.
So we're going into executive session, matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation.
And then make a motion on it?
Somebody make that motion?
No, it has to be up here. Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then if someone just wants to make notes that when the executive session ended?
Yeah.
And you can make... No idea.
Yeah, we can make a personal...
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right.
No, we're in executive session. No, we're in executive session.